I'll call the July 15th Issaquah City Council meeting to order and invite those present to join the council in the pledge allegiance if you desire.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You will notice that I am not Mayor Ava Freisinger who is on vacation. I'm Fred Butler, the council president and acting as the mayor pro tem this evening. With that, our first order of business is an opportunity for audience comments, and I would just point out the guidelines for participation. When recognized, please use the lectern and speak into the microphone. State your name, address, your relationship to the city, for example, a resident or a property owner, business owner, et cetera. And please limit your comments to five minutes. If you have written comments, you can submit those comments to the city clerk. And with that, is there anyone in the audience desiring to comment? Has anyone signed up?
Yes, we have two people signed up. First, it will be Jean Fitzgerald, followed by Charlene Gaston.
Right over there, Jean.
Since I've never talked into one of these things, ever, is it all right?
It's doing great, and if for some reason the sound is not coming through, that on the air light over at the top behind the will start blinking and someone will let you know.
All right, but it's okay now.
It is. You are, you're ready to roll. We'll start the time now.
My name is Jean Fitzgerald, and I live in, at 1-8862 Southeast 42nd Street in Issaquah, and I own the property, and I'm a resident. So, and the reason I'm here tonight is to discuss the fireworks code, which I think is excellent that Issaquah has right now, or the law that you have. I'm concerned about the enforcement. It's, I think the police are having a hard time, and it's, it's not really working. Because it's, when the safe and sane part of the law went in, there was a real drawback, and people stopped, and they were worried, they were afraid they were going to get fined, they didn't want to shoot off big fireworks, at least the big ones. But now, more and more and more, in my neighborhood, they just go to town on it. And then, when this came out, I don't know if you remember this or not, but they have the legal fireworks on a barge at Lake Samamish. I thought, yes, you know, this is going to solve the problem. It doesn't. They just start their own fireworks show when this is over. So, I have some suggestions that I would like to present. And then, well, and I guess the thing that got me started was the fire at Lake Union, because the neighbor right beside me blows off fireworks off of his dock right over my dock, boat, house, and deck. And it's very scary. And I brought a picture of that. This is our dock and boat. This is my neighbor's dock and boat. He takes his boat away, and it blows right over mine. So you can see what that does. And my house, of course, is not back very far from the water. So my suggestion is, is that you fine people $1,000 to $2,000, no warnings, for discharging. I think the police, I shouldn't use the word "take it" more seriously, but I think they're young, and they like fireworks, and it's hard for them to, well, we're just discussing it, it's hard for them to say, you know, I'm going to charge you the first time $1,000. And I think that hopefully you could put on extra police that night. And the other thing is, is that this all needs to be publicized, a lot of education, a lot of talk about it, in the paper, and the whole, you know, things like that flyer sent out, so that people know what's going to be happening. Let's see, there was one more thing I forgot, but I don't remember what it was, the Lake Union thing. Well, I'll remember when I get back to my seat. Thank you very much. Enforcement, that's what we need.
Thank you very, very much for those comments. And the next person?
City council members, I'm Charlene Gaston. I live at 1-8617 Southeast 41st Court in Issaquah. I'm a property owner of Issaquah. And I'm here representing the South Lake Samamish neighborhoods. We talked at length in the June 17th meeting about needing safe pedestrian access from our neighborhoods down to the state park. I'm here tonight to just reiterate that fact, that we don't have safe pedestrian access. And just with us being a green city and trying to encourage alternative modes of transportation, we really need that in our neighborhood. So we do have a petition in our neighborhood. Right now, we have 364 people who've signed it in favor of this. And we did talk about it, it was number 18 on the Transportation Improvement Plan, last month's meeting. I'm just asking that you please consider raising that funding and the timeline on that, and that is why I'm here tonight. I thank you for your time.
And thank you very, very much for coming. And do you have a petition that you want to turn into the?
I think Tiffany Enders turned it in at the June 17th.
She did.
It's that petition, we keep adding signatures. It's died off a little bit, because our big push was that June 17th meeting, but we continue to get people added to it.
Great.
And we can push, 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 more and more and more, if we need to, and we will.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you very, very much, Charlene.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else signed up to speak? Is there anyone in the audience who would love to speak?
Hello, my name is Bernadette Anne. I live at 5406-232nd Avenue Southeast, Issaquah, Washington, 98029. Welcome, hello, Madam Mayor Standen and council members. I'm here this evening, a little late to the game, to speak to you, only because I've been traveling and not had the opportunity to come to any of the other meetings that have addressed the annexation issue. But that's what I'm here to speak on behalf of. The city has wholeheartedly embraced a very detailed and analytical study, both in 2003 and now again in 2013. I was honored to be invited to be a member of the Annexation Task Force in 2003 and again this year. So on that level, I am a city resident, I'm speaking to you as a city resident, but I tend to have a little bit more knowledge of this, of the information than most city residents might have. As some of you know, I bought my first home in 1993, it was in the Cloughane subdivision. I bought my second home in 1996, I was still in the Cloughane PAA, but outside the subdivision. I moved to the other spectrum, I went to five acres from the blueprint of, you know, small postage stamp lots at that time. But I was 300 feet from the boundary of Issaquah. Never did I guess that when I finally sold that home, I would still not be an Issaquah resident. On the first annexation vote, 67% said they wanted to become Issaquah residents. I believe that support still exists. In the newspapers, we tend to hear propaganda and rhetoric, I think that's a small minority, and people trying to mix up the information so people aren't confused, as they did right before that last vote. Well, myself, I didn't wait. I knew what the amenities would be, being a city of Issaquah residents. When I had a chance to buy my third home, I bought it in the city, and I'm so glad I did. So I know what it's like to live in Cloughane, live in the PAA, and live in the city. And I'm just going to outline a few things, you've heard them all before, but I'll let you hear them again. Police, the response time, the ability to respond, the ability to have time to care about suspicious activity, to ask for a drive-through and then actually see a squad car come through, that's what it's like to live in the city of Issaquah. That didn't happen in unincorporated Metro King County. It's indisputable when you see these things about how my tax dollars go farther to support city services that have really touched me personally. City crews, bought my house in the city in December 2007. It's not an acre, so it's not postage stamp lot, but I still remember the first time I was awakened at 3:00 AM in the morning by a truck sound. It was December, it was a large truck, it was a snowplow. You know, I, some of you know I love snow. I was so excited, that meant when I woke up in the morning, there'd be snow or something like it on the ground. But it also meant that there was a snowplow on my roads at 3:00 AM. That didn't happen in Cloughane, that didn't happen on the five acres where I lived, and it's continued to happen in the last five years that I've been in the city, because that's what city services provide, that's what our tax dollars pay for. Now, Public Works, Stormwater, city does a great job with the service of stormwater within the city. I pay a small fee for that, but the dollars are accumulated and they really go towards city services. I didn't feel that way as an unincorporated King County resident. Questions about the city or what's going on, I feel I can call, I can dial the mayor and call her. I know I can call any of you, I can email you, I can call a stormwater manager, I can call Public Works, I will get a real person, I will get a response, they know where I live, and they can assimilate to whatever condition that I'm talking about. The city has annexed South Cove, Talis, Issaquah Highlands. I think it's high time that the city include the residents in the Cloughane PAA in the city. You've tried once before, you gave a vote, and it didn't pass, but I think that was all about confusion. So I want to thank you for your work on the study, thank you for the dollars that you've invested, again. And I'm thankful that you're willing to give the voters one proposal one more time. I was very familiar with the first vote, I was a co-author on the pro statement and the rebuttal statements for the voters' pamphlet.
Thirty seconds remaining.
I know what was confusing, it was that second vote. Residents in the PAA didn't know if they voted yes, no, that was a no. Give them one chance to vote yes, I think they will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else desiring to speak? Third and final call. Seeing no one then, audience comments are closed, and we will move to committee and regional reports. Councilmember Fortner.
Thank you. The Infrastructure Committee met on July 8th for a special infrastructure meeting to discuss the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District Interlocal Agreement regarding Overdale Water Connection Charges, which is Item D under Regular Business on tonight's agenda. The next Infrastructure Committee meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, July 18th, at 5:30 in the Pickering Room. Currently on our agenda is Agenda Bill 6670, TIB Grant Application Submittal for East Lake Samamish Parkway Improvement Project, Agenda Bill 6657, Route 269 Transit Now Financial Partnership Agreement, a discussion on the Community Sustainability Fund, and a discussion on the Bike Ped Plan Update. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. The Land and Shore Committee met on July 9th, and the first item that we talked about was the major amendment to Issaquah Highlands Two-Party Development Agreement. This would be the Swedish agreement that's being worked on, we got an update from city staff, and I believe that that development agreement is going before the Urban Village Development Commission in August, and either September or October, we will see a first draft of that. The next item we talked about, Agenda Bill 6667, Transfer Development Rights Code Amendments, and that will be coming to the August 5th full council meeting for recommendation to adopt that new code. We heard, since our last meeting, we heard some comments from Forterra in King County, and we went through those, there were some additional code changes that were recommended. And we also heard from Talis Management Services about their opposition to the TDR code in general. We also discussed Agenda Bill 6668, it's a proposal to amend land use and engineering fees. We reviewed quite a lengthy report from a consultant. The goal of the Agenda Bill would be to recapture fees at a 100% rate. The increase in fees in some areas was, or in a lot of areas, was quite steep. So the committee asked staff to come back at our next meeting with some more information. The first was a phased-in approach for those fees, because we thought that in a lot of areas, it was just too big of a chunk to take at one year. And we also requested information on what it would take for the city to base its fees on what we call a time study. So the fees are basic, are, the city would do studies to find out just how much time we are spending on certain applications, and from there, we would determine what the fees would be. We also talked about Agenda Bill 6671, which is the resolution declaring the city's intent to annex the Cloughane PAA. That is on the agenda tonight, the committee recommended unanimously that we move forward with that. I will save discussion for that, with, about that for later. The next meeting of Land and Shore is August 13th at 5:00 PM here in council chambers, and the only item that I right now expect to be on the agenda is the land use and engineering fees. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mars.
No report.
Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and good evening to members of the viewing public. I have no local report this evening, however, the Eastside Transportation Partnership did meet on Friday, July 12th. We had, first item was a wrap-up of the 2013 legislative session and the next steps. As many of you may already know, the legislature, specifically one chamber of the legislature, did not pass a transportation package, and as such, there were a number of repercussions for local funding of transportation that were impacted by that lack of action. One that was particularly discussed on this item are some very severe significant service cuts that King County Metro will likely need to implement, and the partnership asked in a future meeting if we could get additional information so that we could bring that back to our constituents in terms of what routes are likely on the chopping block. We also had a presentation from King County on what was called the Right Size Parking Project, which is a tool to help jurisdictions and developers determine how to provide the right amount of parking for multifamily developments. And there were a number of questions asked about that particular project. We also approved a new ETP interlocal agreement, which will be sent to individual councils for adoption and signature, and then to the county council for final approval. That was the culmination of a fairly lengthy effort, took us probably a good year, year and a half of discussions to get to that point, but it was unanimously approved by the partnership. Additionally, we talked about forming a subcommittee to potentially discuss spending the membership dues that ETP collects from each of the member jurisdictions, and what we might be able to use those on. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Councilmember Butler. Services and Safety will be meeting at 5:00 PM Wednesday, the 17th, at the Eagle Room, there's three items before us that evening. The first is 6672, Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement for Traffic Safety Camera System. The second is 6676, Relocating and Enhancing the Skateboard Park. And this will be taking a further look at a variety of public input, social media outreaches, to determine the appropriate location to ensure the safety and optimal recreational experience of the skateboard park community, and to determine appropriate amenities for all ages and skill levels. And while maintaining the impact of our other citizens and the neighbors, also, I believe, will be some discussion on financing. The next agenda bill we have before us is 6555, and this is a consolidation of development commissions. In November 2011, Moss Adams prepared a Development Department Organizational Assessment for the city, and among its findings and recommendations was a reorganization of the structures, was to recommend the consolidation of a number of commissions and committees, so we'll be taking a good, hard look at that Wednesday night also. And that's the only three items that evening, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
No report.
I have a brief regional report. As a Sound Transit Board member, I chair the Capitol Committee, and last Thursday, I'm happy to report that the Capitol Committee approved an action to authorize the chief executive officer to execute a contract with CH2M Hill to provide planning consulting services for the Central and East High Capacity Transit Corridor Study Project. Now, that contract is a little over $2 million. It will address high-capacity transit in the I-90 corridor, and will include an evaluation of potential routes and station locations for each high-capacity transit mode. That study is estimated to be completed in 2014, and to be completed in 10 months. So that concludes committee and regional reports. Now to the mayor's report. The August Council Committee Work Session has been canceled, the next session is scheduled for September the 9th. There will be an executive session meeting held this evening for the purpose of collective bargaining discussions under RCW 42.30 dot 140, paren four, close paren, paren B, close paren. This item is expected to take approximately 20 minutes, action is anticipated in open At 7:00 PM on July the 23rd, the Issaquah Trolley will be hosting an open house, stop by the Issaquah Train Depot to learn more about future trolley service in Issaquah, and volunteer opportunities. The next item, anyone can create artwork from the ground up at our free chalk art festival from noon to 5:00 PM on July the 30th at the Issaquah Community Center. Chalk, water, and snacks are provided to participants at no charge. This fall, police will be launching a free 10-week Citizens Police Academy for adults who either live or work in Issaquah. Each course will be taught by trained Issaquah police officers. More information on how to apply is available on our website at issaquahwa, that's issaquahwa.gov. I am pleased to announce that our city administrator, Bob Harrison, was recently elected as a Regional Vice President of the International City/County Management Association. Serving on the ICMA Executive Board is one of the highest honors that a member of the local government management profession can receive. Bob will be inducted into office at ICMA's annual conference in September, and will serve on the board for three years. Bob, congratulations on that honor, Issaquah is proud of you. And that concludes the mayor's report. Moving now to the consent calendar, have accounts payable and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you. There are five items on tonight's consent calendar. The first of those are payables and payroll for July 15th. The second are minutes from the city council regular meeting on July the 1st. The third item is Agenda Bill 6672, An Amendment to Professional Services Agreement for a Traffic Safety Camera System. That is a referral to Council Services and Safety Committee. The fourth is Agenda Bill 6680, an ICMA loan program, and that is to authorize that. And the final item on the consent calendar is Agenda Bill 6681, the 2013 Maintenance Overlay Contract, number MC13-1, and that is to award the contract. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar down to regular business? Seeing none then, what is the pleasure?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none then, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, our first item is Agenda Bill 6677, Source Control Specialist Grant Agreement. This is coming to the council from the administration, and I can see that we're trying to resolve some technical difficulties. Carrie, or, do you just need the mic? Why don't you come up? Okay.
I think they're about done.
Well, good. Okay.
Good evening, my name's Carrie Rittland with the City of Issaquah Public Works Engineering Department here to present Agenda Bill 6677. This item is on regular business due to the time sensitivity of being requesting this grant from Department of Ecology. So the grant, the action is requesting acceptance of a Department of Ecology grant for a local source control specialist position. This is grant money from the Department of Ecology in about an amount of $99,358. The agenda bill also requests approval of a one-half FTE, Full-Time Equivalent Staff Position in Public Works Engineering to, that would be funded by the grant. As a little background, the source control program started in Issaquah in 2008 with the first ecology grant, and we're on to the fourth grant currently with this, under this agenda bill. So source control refers to pollution prevention activities that control pollution at its source, and in this context, it involves working with businesses to improve their operations, their best management practices, to reduce or eliminate sources of pollution. So involves groundwater protection, surface water protection, also the sanitary sewer of keeping hazardous materials out of the, out of those receiving bodies. This half FTE is an excellent opportunity to gain additional in-house expertise through the training that this grant program provides. Currently, we've been under this program, as I mentioned, since 2008, but in recent years, the grants have diminished considerably, so in this current program, we're asking Ecology to go back up to half FTE and fully fund a, that half, well, half-position limited term, to your position to address expansion of various water quality programs that we do within Public Works Engineering. There's been quite an expansion of those activities the last several years in response, in response to various regulations. So under this grant, there's a number of 140 site visits, that's written into the grant agreement, but there's quite a few other activities that go on as well. The businesses targeted are typically, you know, there's automotive, dry cleaners, restaurants, dentists, veterinary, gas station, grocery stores, all these pretty much have All these pretty much have various issues that we work, provide technical assistance to, to help reduce the sources of pollution that goes into our groundwater, stormwater, sewer systems. I ask now if there's any questions specifics on this program that I can address from the council members?
I have a question of the city administrator. I notice in the agenda bill that there are two actions. We had some discussion at leadership this past Wednesday about those two actions. Are both of those actions proposed for this evening as outlined in the, in the motion? Or is it just to authorize the local source control specialist agreement?
So the two items in here would be one and two. I think, however, that, as we discussed at leadership this week, there's, we see some opportunities to do some consolidation of some additional work with another potential position. And so even though we'll be authorizing this, one and two, we won't fill the position until we came back and had a discussion at the services committee about that concept of how the overall position would be, would be, you know, our suggestion of consolidation.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there a motion? Councilmember Fortner?
I would move to authorize the local source control specialist agreement and authorize a new part-time, half-FTE, non-regular, limited-term, local source control specialist position in public works engineering as funded by the grant.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Councilmember Fortner?
So I'm assuming that the current LSC employee we have was started with a grant funding through DOE.
Yeah, that's correct. For the first two grant terms, she was fully funded under the grant, and that's position as trans has pretty much been incorporated into our staffing.
Is it, is it still responsible for LSC, or it's moved on to other things that, I mean, I guess my question is this, is this supplemental, or is it strictly standalone, this position?
This will be standalone for an additional half FTE. The current source control specialist, she would still spend around 5% to 10% of the time on the program as well, in addition to the half FTE.
Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Scher?
Thank you. I have two questions. One is, when did we learn about this grant? When did the city become aware of this funding source?
For this one, well, this, I should have mentioned that this was preceded by Agenda Bill 6603 in April, when Department of Ecology was being, setting up, preparing for the next biennium grant funds, but then it got pretty much held until the grant state, or the state budget got passed, and that obviously went to the last minute. So it wasn't until the first week of July, we actually had the papers and confirmation of funding.
Okay. My second question is, the justification for this position, according to the bill, is future growth and new regulations such as NPDES Phase II. So what happens in 2015 when the grant runs out? Does the city foresee a need to still continue the position but funded by the city?
Well, there's two, probably two possibilities. Ecology will more than likely continue this grant program, and we'll just continue funding through that source. Or the city may elect to fund it independently, just through our own budgets.
But the position will, in your estimation, still be necessary beyond 2015?
Oh, yes. There's, particularly the Phase II permit, there's, it's quite an expansion of our obligations to conduct these kind of activities as a requirement of this ecology, and another, another arm of Ecology's permit for our municipal stormwater system.
Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Is the council ready to act on this agenda bill? All those in favor of authorizing the local source control specialist agreement and authorize a new part-time, 0.5 FTE, non-regular, limited-term, local source control specialist position in public works engineering as funded by the grant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries, those opposed, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Carrie. Moving now to Agenda Bill 6678, Conservation Finance/Park Bond Ordinance. That's coming back to us from the Services and Safety Committee. Eileen, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, Fred Iwood. This is 6678, and at July 1st, 2013, city council meeting, the city council supported the allocation of conservation finance park bond funds in the amount of $10 million and directed administration to prepare an ordinance for setting a special election incorporating council's priorities and preferred conservation finance park bond allocations. You know, in order for this to move forward, the bond measure to pass in the November 5th general election, the city must have at least a 60%, yes, and a minimum turnout of 3,887 voters. With regards to election costs, there is no additional cost associated with this added, this to the ballot in November. So with that, I'd like to move this evening to adopt ordinance number...
2680.
Providing for the submission to the voters of the Issaquah, of the city, at a special election to be held herein on November 5th, 2013, in conjunction with the state general election to be held on the same date of the proposition authorizing the city to issue a general obligation bond for the proposed purpose of financing certain open space conservation acquisitions and park improvements in the principal amount of no more than $10 million payable by annual property tax levies to be made in excess of regular property tax levies and to levy those excesses, excess property taxes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Stacy?
Thank you. One of the questions I had in here is there's a, we have general language in this ordinance, and so I wanted to know if we could get just a little bit of information about why it's so general, because as I read through it, it looks a little general. So for example, it says Issaquah Community Center. I don't think there's anything on the bond list that includes changes to the community center, but it would be changes to the green area, so better drainage. So I was just wondering if we could address why it's so general.
I'd like to introduce Alice Ostick. Ostick from Foster Pepper. She is our bond counsel, and she would like to respond to that question. Thanks, Stacy.
Oh, gosh. Hi. It's good to see you all. It's been a little while since I've been out to visit you all in Issaquah. I'm Alice Ostick with Foster Pepper. Been doing the city's bond work for nearly a dozen years now, I think, and Foster Pepper has been working with the city for longer than that, so I'm very happy to be here. We were asked to help draft this, and in response to your question, you know, I don't have, you know, the kind of familiarity as you have with, you know, what the specific projects are, but we tried to come up with something that will be general and flexible enough to be able to capture whatever it is that the city, you know, does want to do by the time the bonds are actually issued. And so once the voters actually approve it, you're really stuck with exactly the language that's in that ballot proposition. And so should anything change down the road? Should extra proceeds be available after you've completed all the rest of your projects? I think the thinking was to list the kinds of projects and the kinds of properties or locations where improvements would be made, but to, you know, still allow the process to develop, to define exactly what those improvements might be. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Are we ready to vote on this agenda bill? All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2680 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
That is six ayes and one nay. Councilmember Scher dissenting. Moving now to Agenda Bill 6671, Resolution Declaring City's Intent to Annex the Kohani PAA, Initiating an Annexation Election, and Setting the Annexation Boundaries.
Would you like me to navigate the PowerPoint while you speak? Or whatever, if you're more comfortable.
And this is coming back from Land and Services. Stacy Goodman?
Land and Shore.
Oh, Land and Shore.
We're down to two.
We're down.
She does serve on both.
Yes.
She does, and does a mighty good job, I might add. Stacy?
So, so Land and Shore has been looking at this for quite a while, and we have, for several months, been reviewing the financial study that was done by Nesbit, and I would like to publicly thank them for all of the hard work and good work that they did, very detailed work. I think just about everybody took a turn on the committee over the last several months, and we had a lot of questions answered, and all of them, the follow-up was great with Nesbit. And then the last meeting Land and Shore had, we talked about, we went beyond the financial study and talked about the other, I guess, considerations for annexation or intent to annex, and I think that's largely going to be part of our presentation tonight and maybe include a little bit more. So I won't go into the details of that. I will say that Land and Shore unanimously recommended that the full council move ahead with an intent to annex the Kohani annexation area. So I don't know if we want to have our presentation.
Would you, you want to make a motion first?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
So I would move to approve resolution number...
All right. 2013 dash zero seven.
Declaring the city's intent to annex an unincorporated area of King County, commonly known as the Kohani Potential Annexation Area. Describing the boundaries of such area, calling for an election to be held submitting to the voters within such area, the proposal for annexation. Further submitting to said voters the proposition for the annexation area to assume its proportionate share of the city's indebtedness existing as of the effective date of the annexation, and to be assessed and taxed at the same rate and upon the same basis as other property within the city entering legislative findings and providing direction to staff.
Second.
And I think there's a second motion.
It's been moved and seconded, and I believe there's a staff report.
Okay, then there's a second motion, I guess we do after.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Diane Markot, the Finance Director for the City of Issaquah. Before you is Resolution 2013 dash seven. There is a replacement resolution for you. When we published the resolution on Friday, we were getting additional clarification on the legal description, and that would be the only change included in your packet from the one you had received on Friday, was just to clarify some of the legal descriptions. Additionally, I want to thank Tina for driving my PowerPoint, and part of the presentation will be by me, and then city administrator Bob Harrison will be finishing up. And from the Planning Department, we have Trish Hinonen, who is providing the technical expertise on the planning-related site. So Trish is taking the kind of the plant, long-range planning piece, and I'm doing the finance piece. So the presentation tonight is a recap or a walkthrough of the history where we've been. We've had a very long journey in coming, becoming before you tonight. The first slide that you have is very interesting, having been newly employed with the city about a year, and going back and looking at the city in preparation for tonight. What's really interesting is that one could say that the city of Issaquah is, in fact, a city of annexations. We have, if you can see right here, here is the original township of the city of Issaquah, and in, over the last 60 years, we have been doing annexation, with a lot of them occurring in the last 20 years. Many of the conversations that are occurring today are the similar conversations that were occurring 60 years ago. It's always the question of, how does this benefit the area to be annexed? How does this benefit the area that's already existing in the city? What are the pros and the cons, and what are the financial impacts? But as you can see, we definitely are a city of annexations. On the next side, it shows the Kohani PAA. Kohani is located north and of us, and it, on one side of the Kohani annexation would, on the right-hand side, would remain unincorporated, King County, and towards the left of it is the city of Issaquah with portions of Kohani being in Samamish. And so the portion that's in King County is not in what we call anybody's potential annexation area, so it would stay rural. The reason Kohani is even considered for annexation is the overall nature and development that has occurred up there. It is more an urban level of service. Back in the 80s, when the Growth Management Act came about, one of the considerations in looking at areas in unincorporated counties was to look at the level of service and say, is this something best served by the county at an urban level, or is it something best served by city because of the type of development that's occurring? So cities throughout the state of Washington went through this planning process and had identified those areas, as we call the potential annexation areas. On the next slide, we begin a walk down History Lane as Ms. Annie, Ann, indicated back in 2005, we had a vote, and 67% of the Kohani PAA residents voted to be annexed to the city. And once again, it was somewhat confusing, and because we had a split ballot measure. Split ballot measures are unusual in my history in government over 34 years. Quite frankly, this was the first time I had heard of something like this. In May 1st of 2010, the council met, and one of their number-one goal back then was to update the Kohani annexation study in 2011. And then in June of 2011, the city council received requests from homeowners to, from the Kohani PAA, to have the, have the city reconsider annexing back to the city. Going on in 2012, the city then also receives a petition from, the earlier was an informal letter signed by about 10 residents up in the area. In May of 2012, we then receive a petition with 534 signatures from the Kohani residents supporting the annexation. Then in June 2nd of 2012, the city council was doing some additional planning for the forthcoming 2013 year, and another one of their goals was to reiterate something from the 2010 goals, was to complete the annexation study and then make a decision about where the council wanted to move. In 2012, the city hired Tom Nesbit's firm to conduct the fiscal analysis, and we have been working with him all the way through June in providing information to him, as well as the task force working with him. So going on to 2013, in January through April, we had the annexation task force, and what their role was, was not to make recommendations, but it was composed of four individuals from the city of Issaquah, four individuals from the Kohani PAA, and one individual representing District 10. Their role was to review the data and to test the validity of it, to make sure that the information appeared to be valid, it reflected the true facts and information. So this group was used as a way of validating the consultant study and then providing information as far as this needs to be studied or this needs to be looked at. But the ultimate goal of the committee was not to make a recommendation. Once that group finished, then we began doing outreach. We held two workshops... Once that group finished, then we began doing outreach. We held two outreach meetings, one here in the council chambers for those residents in particular from the City of Issaquah, and then we met up in the Kohani area at a school up there to make it more convenient for the members of the Kohani PAA. In twenty-thirteen, in June of this year, we completed the fiscal study. The fiscal study is located on the city's website, and in addition, there are seventeen FAQs regarding questions that the community has along the way. Part of this process was whenever there was a question, what we would do is, rather than just simply answer it to that individual, we also made it available to the general public, so they knew what types of questions that were being asked throughout the community. Some other things that we've been doing as far as community outreach, you know, as we indicated, we had three task force meetings in twenty-thirteen. The Land and Shore Committee met several times in January, March, April, June, and July to study this. Part of their earlier process was a look at the consultant's study to just get a reaction, so that the consultant had a sense of the direction and whether or not it was meeting the needs of the city. On May the eighth, we had council workshop where we went through the entire study, and then we had the two meetings in May here at City Hall and then at Challenger L M entry. In addition to that, we always like to be transparent. We always like to have as many venues as we possibly can to share information with the general public. So we had, like I indicated, we had a lot of information on our website. We had some press releases. We did some email alerts. We had eighteen newspaper articles, and this year we introduced social media for that, for those individuals that prefer to get their information that way. So we really tried hard to get outreach and get feedback to make sure that we were reaching as many people as possible. Part of the study, when you do an annexation, there's really two main pieces. One of them is a cost-benefit analysis, and the other one is a look at the general benefits to the community. So that was the piece that Nesbit did, was really to do the fiscal analysis. When you look at the Kohani PAA and compare it to the City of Issaquah, in general, we can say that the Kohani area in size and areas about one-third, and in revenues, because it doesn't have as much commercial activity up there, it tends to be more residential or more housing, they're about one-fourth. So they have nearly four thousand units compared to our fourteen thousand units. They're one point two acres to our seven acres. They are nearly two square miles to our eleven and a half, and so forth. And you can see that their taxable assessed valuation, because it is primarily residential, is not exactly in that one-third, one-fourth range. The real estate excise tax generates about a hundred and ten million, and I realize we left off two numbers. So for the City of Issaquah, just as a comparison, where they are a hundred and ten million, we are three hundred and twenty million. And also on lane miles, where they are fifty-five lane miles, we are two hundred and twelve lane miles. So that just sort of gives you a sense of the general character, the demographics, and the area that's being considered tonight. Going on a little bit more on the fiscal basis, what the study resulted in, it said that on an annual basis, we would get about six point four eight million dollars per year, as long as we qualified for the state annexation sales tax. And we would spend about five point, five and a quarter million per year in services for the first ten years. Then after that, those costs would go down, because in the initial ten years, we would be having startup costs or one-time costs that we were either repaying the debt on, or we would have already gone ahead and either acquired the assets or hired the employees. The things that do not change is that we would continue to have Eastside Fire and Rescue continue to provide our emergency and fire services. The Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District would continue to provide our water and sewer services. The city would take on the stormwater responsibilities for that area. And also, the school, there would be no change to the school district. Conversely, on the other side, if you look at the Kohani Potential Annexation Area, in that area, homes on the average, the average is around three hundred and twenty thousand. When we go through and look at the cost that they're currently paying versus what they would pay if they came into the City of Issaquah, they would be paying about three hundred and eighty dollars less a year, and that would be taken in consideration any utility taxes that they currently would not be paying on, like their cell phones or their gas and electric bill versus the savings that they would see in the overall property tax assessment. The next slide is just a comparison of the annual operating costs. So that you can see is the revenue coming in on an annualized basis is five point three million, and the operating expenditures annually is about four point six million. So each year, we should be having some additional revenue that we could reinvest in other areas that maybe at this, during the study period, that we maybe didn't consider, so there would be some additional revenue to continue to do some enhancement. And that is around six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So even if there was some issues related to the state sales tax credit, there still is sufficient revenue. It might take a little bit longer to accomplish some of the council's goals. And then the startup cost, we only had a few departments that had overall startup costs, with the largest being in the Public Works Department. In the Police Department, we would look at hiring five officers plus one record specialist to assist in the increased activity there. Stormwater, there would be some additional work that we would have to do in that area. Public Works had the most cost. A lot of it is investing in, like dump trucks, a lot of heavy equipment in order to provide services up in that area. Parks and Recreation would be looking at some increases in operations there, and then we have some smaller increases in some of the smaller departments, like in the Finance Department. We would need some assistance, particularly with the stormwater, is getting all of the accounts into the system. So we have about four or five departments that had minimal costs associated with it. Then if we were to apply to the State of Washington for the annual sales tax credit, that's estimated to be one point one million, and that would be used to offset some of our operations, as well as one-time capital costs. What the state did many years ago is to assist and to encourage cities to do annexation, they made this sales tax credit available to help encourage cities, because it really becomes difficult when in the county, they are separated from the areas that they're trying to serve through cities. And so what we're trying to do is make the services more contiguous, more related to the most, the closest associated entity. What, this study also assumed in this, for the purpose of the presentation, is that we would match the amortization schedule of the capital investments, again, against the ten-year sales tax credit. And with that, I'll turn it over to Bob.
Thank you, Diane. That was very useful information. Counsel, as you look at the resolution you'll be approving tonight, there is one section in here under Section One, Findings, that you have to make. And the first sentence is, the council hereby adopts above recitals in support of the annexation proposed by this resolution. And so the first are the recitals that you got on page one. And then the second piece of that is, the council further finds that the best interest and general welfare of the City of Issaquah would be served by the proposed annexation. And so, as the Finance Director just laid out, you know, to start with, you see that positive benefit on an annual basis to the city taxpayers of about six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars a year. But we did identify approximately ten, we call this kind of a top-ten list, of benefits that the community will receive as a result of the annexation. And so, first off, is entitlement city. So the magic number, when you start to look at cities, is fifty thousand people in terms of population, and at that fifty thousand number, you start to receive, you start to get some recognition and are able to receive certain entitlements that you don't receive if you're below that. So first and foremost, is the city becomes an entitlement city for federal community development block grant dollars. So right now, if you're under fifty thousand in population, those federal block grant dollars flow from the federal government down to the state. The state then provides it to the county, and the City of Issaquah right now competes on a countywide basis for those dollars. And all projects that the city chooses to submit competes at that, for those dollars with King County and for communities that are less than fifty thousand. Being an entitlement city, we would just receive that direct allocation through those pass-through entities that we, that I just mentioned. And the second thing is that we would be able to participate on a regional King County EMS levy board that helps shape the EMS services and costs that are presented to the voters to approve. So we'd actually have a seat at the table in those conversations. Workforce housing, as Diane mentioned earlier, the average assessed valuation of a house in Kohani is three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It's about a hundred thousand dollars less than a current house in the City of Issaquah. So the relative affordability of Kohani housing will allow for more Issaquah residents the opportunity to become homeowners in the area that they live and work. One of the interesting things is the ability of the housing mix within the community to remain relatively stable. As of this year, we are, the City of Issaquah proper is approximately fifty point five percent single-family housing and forty-nine and a half percent multifamily housing. So the majority of the housing in the Kohani annexation area is single-family, and as you start to look at the permit activity that's starting to occur through the city, most of that permit activity is in multifamily housing. So over the long run, the addition of this annexation area to the city will help keep a stabilized ratio of single-family housing to multifamily housing in the community. Property value stabilization, so one of the interesting things that we saw, at least in this part of the country, is that single-family housing in the Kohani PAA remained relatively stable. So while we were seeing some increases in growth, obviously during the two thousands, when we had the housing recession in the late two thousands, there were some increases and there were some decreases. What we didn't see were major fluctuations in the valuation of the property during that time period, where you did see that significant valuation variances were in commercial and rental properties, is where you saw the major variations in those types of properties. So the relative stability of single-family housing will help provide additional economic balance to the overall property tax base in the community. One of these items that really is an economic measure, but I think that we've already seen it, is that Kohani residents, they already participate, and they're active members in the Issaquah community. They participate in our recreation programs. Many residents of the Kohani PAA are actively involved in city boards and commissions. So this concept of social affinity, and we've heard testimony in front of city council before, most of the people who live up there don't even know that they're not part of the Issaquah community already. And as we saw in the previous election, sixty-seven percent of the individuals that live up in the Kohani PAA wanted to become part of the greater Issaquah community. Retail base, there is a small parcel in that area that has a potential for retail development. While it is relatively small, there is that, still that potential for some additional development that would help provide increased tax collections, which would benefit city services and programs. Zoning would ultimately get finalized and approved as we go through this process. So, you know, the city council will still have that opportunity to finalize whatever the zoning would look like in the overall area. Enhanced revenue, Finance Director talked about that before. We're going to see, we would anticipate an increase of about six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars a year on an ongoing basis, a dividend basis, forever. Now, there may be variations in services based on what the valuation of the property is in that area, but I think the important thing is, you know, bringing this, the PAA area is going to see, we'll see enhanced regular revenue to the overall community. In terms of bonds, Issaquah property owners would actually be paying less property tax and voted general obligation debt, and the city's overall borrowing capacity would increase by thirty-three billion, million? Okay, thirty-three million dollars. I thought it was a kind of, but I figured the number was good. Okay. Cross off the last three zeros there. Whoops. The zero got stuck, I guess. Thirty-three million, I was getting excited too. Wow. The, so as we talked about, I, you know, council will ultimately have to make that decision, but the recommendation from the Land and Shore Committee was that the vote would be a single vote. It would be both whether you come into the city or not, and then the bonded indebtedness would be a part of that. So the residents in the Kohani PAA would be voting on that one single issue. And as a result of that, if it does pass, then that bonded indebtedness, which is essentially the fixed cost of running the city, so the, this building that we're in, the public safety building, any other portions of existing bonds that current residents pay, and the new residents in the Kohani PAA would benefit from, they would be contributing for that as well. So overall, taxes would decrease for the residents that live here. Overall city costs, many city programs that have fixed costs won't necessarily increase with the larger population, so we did talk about, and that's reflected in the fiscal analysis, that we'll be adding five police officers, for example, but we'll still have one city administrator. You know, we'll still have one finance director, we'll still have one police chief. So when you start to look at those costs that are kind of fixed costs across the city, just by virtue of the fact that we're adding this additional tax base, and if you did it on a per capita basis, the larger population, we'd become more efficient on a general basis. And lastly, and I think one of the most important pieces, is that Eastside Fire and Rescue revenue would stay the same with the annexation. Tax base would transfer from District Ten to the city. As you may be aware, District Ten was actually a financial participant in the study, as well as District Thirty-eight. As we have heard from our partners on Eastside Fire and Rescue Board, one of the members is still looking at whether they would continue to participate in the interlocal agreement after its expiration in twenty-fourteen. And I think one of the things that would be very important to the EFOR as a whole, which the city's been committed to, is that if Kohani came into the city, that the overall services and ability to provide services would not be diminished, because they would still be a part of EFOR. Whereas, if it did not come into the city or another jurisdiction chose to annex them, obviously, the whole area that's serviced by Eastside Fire and Rescue, we would both see a diminishment in revenue, diminishment in service area. And so being able to incorporate that area into the city, we should see a maintenance of fire capabilities in the city and the annexed area. And in terms of next steps, assuming council were to make a decision on this this evening, July, we would, the city would go to the boundary review board, and we begin that application. August, the boundary review board review begins, and in September, the boundary review board would hold a public hearing, and we would anticipate in October, a boundary review board decision. There would be two public hearings required, at least thirty days apart. In the fall of twenty-thirteen, we'd have to finalize those dates, I'm looking for Trish, there she is, and to establish what the pre-annexation zoning is. And we have laid this out, that there would be an election in February of twenty-fourteen, assuming we were to proceed with this and all the steps in the timeline were able to be met. So with that, if there are any additional questions for Diane and I, or Trish, who's here, has been handling the zoning and planning piece of this, we'd be happy to answer them.
Well, I'd like to thank you very, very much for that comprehensive staff presentation, the history of where we're at and where we may be heading. So are there questions or discussion? Wow. Well, that I've.
Well, I don't have questions for staff. I have discussion for us.
Are there questions for staff? Discussion then, or comments?
Well, I guess the one, I guess I do have a question then, since I thought it was going to come up. Can we talk about the, there's been a lot of talk about the road, and we talked Issaquah Falls City Road and the road projects that were within that area that are actually King County projects right now on their needs report, which is akin to our transportation improvement plan, our TIP, and what what happens, what's the process when an area is annexed? What's the, can you talk about that generally? And based on your answers, I might have some other questions.
Okay. So the city administration's perspective on this is that the Issaquah Falls City Road is a regional road, and it's going to require a regional solution. And so, you know, our recommendation, depending on whatever the outcome would be, is that the perspective would be going forward, and I think, you know, communicated to the residents of Kohani, is that this is going to require a regional solution to the problem. When you look at transportation networks, most of the investment that you're going to make ends up being in the core, the general retail service area, rather than the exterior of the, you know, transportation network. In this case, because it's covering, it's transporting regional traffic, it's, I think it requires a regional solution. So in terms of the process directly related to your question, it it depends. So if we we have to negotiate this final annexation arrangement with the county, and so if there is some county participation that gets negotiated in that, that may well remain in their regional list. And if there are some anticipated provisions that the city would do this, that would go into our TIP planning list. So it really is going to depend on what the final negotiated agreement would be with King County.
If there was no final negotiated agreement, do you know what would happen to those? So let's say the county said, we're not doing, we're not helping. You take the area and you take the responsibility for those roads. Would it be that the projects that are on their list now would maybe drop off during their next needs study cycle? And at the same time, when we do our annual TIP work, those, some form of those projects may surface on our our TIP. Doesn't mean they're funded, but they may be identified projects that then the city would take responsibility for, and then at a later time, when the funds present themselves, when we have opportunities, then we would do those projects. Is that generally accurate?
That's exactly right. And so I think one of the, as you mentioned, it would become part of our TIP list, which gets adopted on an annual basis. And then that doesn't necessarily necessarily mean the dollars are available locally, because the council has to go through a separate process there. And then you've got, obviously, the rankings of how those projects would go in the TIP list. But I think the interesting thing is, at least we would control the solution to that in the long run. So if the council decided that this was something that we wanted to deal with as a community, we could go ahead and look for grants, you know, whether through the PRSC or other potential infrastructure grants that are available, and then make whatever determination would be necessary to make those local investments.
But I can envision a case that if we were to annex the area, that we would then take the projects as they are sort of described, delineated, whatever, on the county's needs list.
Yeah.
That, I'm not envisioning that that's, that that would happen. We just don't, we don't take, we take an area, not projects.
Right.
Is that true?
That's correct. We would be looking at, we'd reevaluate it based on our anticipated needs, both now and in the future. And so I can't, I don't think I could say that just because it's on this list, A, that it automatically would look the same on list B. I think, you know, we would look at that and evaluate as part of, you know, Public Works Engineering, and they'd evaluate the projects and what that may final, what that final outcome may look like.
Paul?
Thank you. I'd like to ask some follow-on related questions. So this this particular topic is is a keen interest of mine. So to current residents of Kohani who may be aware of these projects being on the county's list, there are four of them, as as Councilmember Goodman mentioned, and some, one about capacity, others about safety, including, you know, turn lanes. And so if a current member of Kohani was aware of these and thought, okay, at least they're on the radar, the county's planning for them, what then, what then are we saying to the Kohani residents by not really formally addressing them as part of our, our, the assessment that we've just, the period, the study that we've just completed? It's, we as a council haven't had an opportunity to discuss these. I've learned, I've heard tonight that that it's not necessarily, I think what I heard what you say, Bob, is that just these projects don't automatically come to us as part of Kohani. They, it's interesting how the county categorizes them as part of the Kohani PAA. They look like they're attached to Kohani. And so, you know, a current resident who would be thinking, hey, down the road sometime, the county at least is planning for capacity and safety improvements to Issaquah Pine, excuse me, Falls City Road. So if I vote to be, if I get the opportunity, and if I were to vote to be annexed into Issaquah, what about these, what is Issaquah going to do about these projects? What are they going to do about capacity? What are they going to do about safety on the Issaquah Falls City Road? We really haven't, we haven't had an opportunity to address those. I understand that, you know, best they could be, they're on the equivalent of the TIP, and that's, makes sense, what you said earlier, that they would go on our TIP. But what is, what is that, I guess maybe this is a question for just thoughts and reactions to other members of the council, but Bob, I'd like to hear your thoughts. I mean, what are we, what are we saying to the residents if we don't consider those as part of our deliberations on this issue? And we have, I mean, there hasn't been a study, so, you know, I'm very curious in what my fellow council members think.
Please. So I've thought about this issue too, and taken a look at it. And kind of the way I view it as, if we look at the, if we look at the transportation elements of our capital improvement plan as a city, we have about $142 million in there currently of things that that we consider important. So that works about, that works out to be about 4,300 bucks for every man, woman, and child, per person in the city. So if you take the items on that list, and there's one of them that I'm not sure is is actually part of Kohani, but it's listed under Kohani, you take all those and you put them together, and you get about $3,400 per person. So this represents sort of the the capital overhead, if you will, of the folks that naturally occur in an area. So to me, what what would happen is that 37 million would get added to the 142 million that we would have, and then we would sort of reprioritize the way we do. We're not, we're not going to spend $142 million this year, obviously, on capital projects. We're going to, from this dais and in committees, figure out where the priorities are, and these would become, these would get consideration. Now, I'll also say that it is, as our city administrator pointed out, a regional issue. TROSACs has a stake in this. People who go up 202 have a stake in it. The city of Sumamish has a stake in it. And so all of those folks would have to be at the table to come up with a solution, because if we were going to solve it ourselves, we might do a fairly small, compact, I mean, having lived in Kohani, I know that people want more access from Kohani Boulevard into the city, and that's sort of the way we might define it. But, so there would be a regional solution, we would expect regional engagement in it, but that it would, it is on the perimeter of the city, and that I think it's important that Kohani folks understand, we're going to talk more later if we think this is good for Kohani and good for Issaquah, but that they understand that it's just part of a an ongoing process that we've, that we do every single year, and it would go into the hopper and it would be in consideration. But, you know, if you ask the majority of the citizens if they would, if they want to improve traffic on Issaquah Falls City Road, or if they want to improve traffic at Exit 15, you're probably going to get a larger number of people that say Exit 15. It's important to understand that, that that, that's our ongoing process, and Kohani would just be one of the many voices as part of that process.
Other discussion or comment? Stacy?
So I feel largely like, like Tola does. As we saw the the map that we saw earlier tonight, there have been dozens of annexations over a period of 70, 75 years, and every single one of those annexations comes with responsibilities and comes with capital needs. And this isn't any different, it, there just happens to be a road. And at some point, somewhere down the line, regardless of who annexes the area or not, there will be probably in the future some improvement to the road, and it, it just ends up happening when it happens. When the dollars present themselves, there are no promises. As we saw recently from the South Cove community, that annexation that took place, there is a great desire to have the access between that community and Issaquah improved. That happens when it can happen. And, and I agree with what what the process is. It, again, as Tola said, just kind of gets put in the hopper, and, and hopefully we have more opportunities to get regional dollars for that road, because then we would be in control, and we would have a, probably a more keen interest in improving that road, and we probably would have a lot of citizens who are coming to us, wanting us to pay attention to it.
And I would, I would comment briefly. We make no promises with respect to that road, or truth of the matter is, to any other capital project in the potential annexation area. We're care, we're very careful not to do that. If they're annexed into the city, they become a part of the city, and they become a part of the processes that we use as we approve the budget for each year. And I would just point out that that road has been in its current condition for a long time, and it did not rise to the top of King County's priority list. They did virtually, you know, nothing. And anecdotally, we hear about that, quite frankly, from groups who are opposed to Kohani and the PAA being annexed by Issaquah. But I've heard from others that the road functionens, functions, and is probably no worse than perhaps some of our arterial roads within our own city that handle pass-through traffic. My two cents on your question, Paul. Eileen?
Just briefly, also, I also agree with what I've heard from from Stacy and Tola. I think it's very important that, I mean, as we we put all of these in the hopper, if you will, that there is, the prioritization process that the city goes through for our CIP, and these would be just added projects that would be going in, and I think the process that we go through now in regards to that process of prioritizing them is a very good process. We look at where the needs are, where the dollars are, and sometimes, you know, roads have to wait a little while. We're working with Dogwood right now. It's been a little bit, but that's coming and it's happening. And I think we would not give any more preference or deference to any issue or any project that Kohani has, and we, they would just be part of the city of Issaquah, and it would be welcoming.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Joshua Share.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have, I have some prepared remarks that are going to, Fred Bother. I have some prepared remarks that I'm going to address both Paul's question and some other issues, because I've, I've put a lot of thought into this, and I've met with a lot of folks who've spent a lot of time on these issues. And I just first want to say in general that I appreciate the hard work that residents of the PAA have put into this issue. It's a very significant issue. There are a lot of good people who live in all of those neighborhoods, Kohani and all the other subdivisions. And so, you know, what I'm about to say should not be any reflection on any individuals, families, businesses, anything like that. I joined the city through annexation in 2006, and I voted yes and yes. And I can understand and appreciate the desire of residents in the PAA. And when I say PAA, again, I'm referring to Kohani and all the subdivisions, to receive great services at a lower cost from the city of Issaquah. But state law does not permit our existing constituents to vote on this question before us. So I primarily analyzed the decision tonight from the point of view of how annexation might affect those whom we currently serve. In my estimation, the study data being relied on to support the conclusion that annexation financially benefits our city omits several key considerations. First, I am not fully confident in the 10-year viability of an annexation sales tax credit, or that it would be capable of resulting in a profit as the fiscal report suggests. Indeed, just two years ago, House Bill 2146 would have slashed that credit by 10% in each year. Now, that particular bill didn't pass, but having just been taken to the brink of a government shutdown, I have little faith that Olympia will simply let this type of subsidy abide for the next 10 years. The Nesbit Study clearly states that removal of the credit would result in a $549,000 yearly loss to our city budget over the period of the five-year amortization of upfront capital costs. By the way, an amortization that has no depreciation or interest factor, and frankly, that's not a risk I'm willing to take. Second, the study's cost report, and this gets to Paul's question, it omits $38 million in improvements to Issaquah Falls City Road that would unambiguously become Issaquah's responsibility after annexation. Now, one could argue those projects are not immediately necessary, or we can promise to reevaluate them at a later time. But as Paul pointed out, King County lists three of them as high priorities for safety, operations, and capacity. Just like we include all of our planned road projects in the TIP and CIP, regardless of when they would be completed in future years, or whether you want to use terms like regional solutions for funding, those four Falls City Road projects would be added to our list, and as a result, compete for prioritization. And I think that's exactly what everyone just said a few moments ago. Things like the Westlake-Sumamish Parkway shoulder that we've heard so much about from residents recently, the Providence Point intersection realignment, even Gilman Boulevard left turn adjustments would all have a lesser chance of rising up the list. That is not only a very negative outcome for current residents, but adding $38 million to the annexation cost study changes the net result for our budget from profit to loss. If the road becomes our problem, then it becomes our cost, even if we seek to find regional grants at a later time. It's as simple as that. It becomes our cost, and you can't discount it from the study. And if we did let the road drop away and fall off the list, I believe we'd be letting down the PAA, just like when South Cove was expecting certain things, like lower cable rates and lower garbage rates and improvements on Lake Sumamish Parkway. Third, the PAA cost analysis also omits capital costs associated with other road and stormwater facility improvements. It omits $2.6 million in curb, sidewalk, and gutter improvements, and it uses a funding level for street overlay, which is commensurate with an already inadequate amount in our 2013 budget. It is important to note that while the median pavement score for Issaquah is 76 out of 100, that same score in the PAA has dropped from 83 to 70 since the first annexation study in just 2004. Moreover, while the study includes a $2.8 million cost for fixing three miles of roads in the PAA, which scored between a shocking 0 and 9, there are another three miles of roadway scoring between 30 and 39, which are unaccounted for. So add $2.8 million more to the cost, plus Public Works Operations estimate of $828,000 needed to quote, "properly maintain the roads in the PAA." That's a direct quote from our own PWO. It is clear that these huge deficiencies are not addressed by the assumed cost and will result in diverting resources from current citizens. Fourth, the per capita level of service to our existing population will decrease for both police and parks. Now, some may disagree with using a strict per capita metric as determinative of service quality, but the numbers are irrefutable. In fact, it's very similar to the per capita transportation analysis that Councilmember Martz just did a few moments ago. We currently have over 31,000 residents and 19 patrol officers, not counting police leadership, jail officers, and communication specialists. That's one officer for every 1,630 people. Adding the PAA would take Issaquah to over 42,000 residents. The study recommends adding 4.9, let's say, five officers, which produces a per capita of one officer for every 1,750 people. That is a drop equal to one fewer officer per 120 individuals. The study also mentions additions to non- The study also mentions additions to non-patrol officer positions, but doesn't assume those cost increases. Furthermore, capital expenses for police are not quantified either. The city website states, "Whether or not an office for police would be located in the PAA is an issue that remains to be determined as a policy matter by the police in conjunction with the city council. The cost report does not include that item at present," end quote. In terms of parks, it's estimated that with 11,000 more people added overnight, another $40 million would be necessary to maintain the same per capita level of service current residents enjoy. Neither slashing that service nor finding those dollars from another source is an outcome I can support. Fifth, we recently adopted a long-term plan for the central area of Issaquah. It remains to be seen whether 11,000 new residents will share that same vision. But regardless, the plan itself lacks a clear funding model. And with the city's focus shifting to accommodate more staff, maintenance, operations, and capital for the PAA, I fear that the incredible work of our central area stakeholders that they put into that process will be delayed, or worse, pushed aside. Sixth, I absolutely disagree with any notion that the PAA is capable of significant redevelopment to accommodate either workforce housing or retail expansion. In fact, King County's website describes the PAA as a, quote, "fully built-out community," end quote. There's a reason why revenues didn't increase much between the 2004 study and now, yet the costs of the PAA have and will continue to rise, which I believe ultimately leads to the rest of us subsidizing the annexed neighborhoods. Seventh, from a non-monetary perspective, looking at the map of where the PAA sits in relation to Issaquah, annexation makes no geographic sense. We might as well annex parts of Lakemont that have an Issaquah postal code and whose residents shop at Costco or the Meadows Center. So let's look at this map. The only point where Issaquah even touches the PAA is at the Pine Classics subdivision. The other 14 subdivisions that would become part of the city are not contiguous to any location in the existing city limits. Think about just how far that means that we would need to carry city staff and services up to the plateau and how it basically assures us of a larger carbon footprint, contrary to established city policy. Look back at the map, and you'll see that Samamish borders to the west, the entire north, and part of the east that remains King County. The result of annexation would produce a map of Issaquah that looks more like a gerrymandered congressional district than a municipality. At the same time, people who live along Black Nugget Road, which immediately adjoins the Highlands, are left out of the annexation area and would remain in an isolated pocket of county services. This is a terrible result for them. Lastly, I would submit that it is faulty inductive reasoning to suggest that just because all those prior annexations shown on that first map were successful, that this one would be as well. Just 13 years ago, Issaquah's population stood at 11,000. But with annexation, we would experience an unparalleled 281% increase since that time. That change is staggering. Surely, some people stand to benefit from moving us inexorably towards 50,000 residents. But I don't believe our constituents of today gain from such action. In fact, the numbers I've discussed bear out an unfortunately negative result. Just add them up, and even if I'm incorrect on 80, 90% of the math will still end up in the red. I pointed out to our administration that tonight's bill leaves out an alternative path, which is equally valid as the others, namely, to release the PAA and allow the city of Samamish to take it, as they recently resolved. The notable lack of that option's inclusion in the bill signals to me that annexation is being pushed in only one direction, and you're either on the train or left at the station. Nonetheless, if and when the PAA annexes, my duty will extend to represent those individuals and families with the same zeal which I currently employ to serve the people of this town, who entrusted me with office for eight years. But here and now, my vision of Issaquah's future is not the grow, 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 build, build, build mindset, which has pervaded our policy discussions for the better part of several years. Rather, before we give in to scare tactics about an EFOR partner possibly leaving, and before we go reaching out to acquire and expand, we should look to tackle the problems which exist in our own neighborhoods, such as the traffic we encounter on existing streets every single day, and improve the quality of life for those citizens who put us on this dais in the first place. We won't know tonight or next February whether my predictions are right, wrong, or somewhere in between. We will let history be the judge. In the meantime, I am fully confident that my vote tonight is the right course of action. And I am dismayed to once again find myself in what appears to be the minority holding that view. For all of those reasons and others, I must strongly dissent from the motion, and I will be voting no. Thank you.
Tola Martz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. So I was the author of the 2010 city goal to kickstart the A study on Kohani. And I was the author of the 2012 goal that became a high-priority city goal for 2013, which has three parts. Allocate funds for a study to be determined to look at current costs, have this council determine a direction, and then to make an action before the end of 2013. And I did this because I lived in Kohani during the last vote, and I voted yes and yes. And I considered it important. And I also think that East King County has had a long-term vision to address Kohani and to address the plateau. And for a long time, it was that the whole plateau was either going to go to Redmond or Issaquah. And the dividing line was, oh, it was northeast Eighth Street, I think. And so, Samamish incorporated as a city. But it was the vision to have Issaquah be part of a municipality. And I, the point of starting this was to get a conversation going again, because I think, and continue to think, it's untenable for Kohani to maintain an unincorporated King County and deny its residents the services it needed. So to me, we came up with three real questions, which was, could the city afford it? Would it be good for the existing residents of Issaquah? And would it be good for the residents of Kohani? Now, on the Kohani piece, you've heard from some residents of Kohani. But fortunately, we here up on this dais don't have to make that decision, because that decision is going to be made at the point where a vote is taken for the residents of Kohani. And I believe they're going to vote yes. And I think we're going to talk about some reasons why, why they might vote yes. But to the question of whether we can afford it, let me look at a big picture for a second about the finances, because Councilmember Share brings up a good point about the stability of the annexation tax credit. But I believe that that's not actually going to be a problem, and here's why. We have identified that we believe there will be 600, roughly $670,000 of additional revenue to cover the expenses on an ongoing basis. Now, what that means is, if we believe that there are $6,200,000 worth of capital expenses, we have a couple of options. If, in fact, we have the annexation tax credit, well, let me, let me say, let's say we don't. Let's say we move forward, and the day after tomorrow, the state legislature guts the program. We can still do this. What we've shown is that in 10 years, and it, Councilmember Share's true, there isn't depreciation in there. But over 10 years, you can take this, the surplus that we would achieve, totally independent of the tax credit, and use it to, to amortize down the additional capital costs. If you have the annexation tax credit, then you can do it in a shorter time than 10 years, if you so choose. Now, we may choose to, we may not choose to. That's a decision that this council and the administration can make at a later date. But you could do it in as little as three and a half years. And then, from that point on, you would have that additional revenue in perpetuity for the city to use for some of the issues that Councilmember Share and others have talked about many times from this dais. So I believe that when you look at it in the big picture that way, I think that it, for me personally, addresses the issue of whether we can afford to do this. On the issue of whether it's good for the city of Issaquah, I've mentioned the long-term vision for East King County and the legacy that we inherit as elected officials from those who came before us and the, and the vision that we have for a county that has high density. And actually, it's funny. Now, we have more public lands in the city of Issaquah than Kohani has. But Kohani actually has a higher population density than the city of Issaquah currently. But there again, it's, it's, it can be a little confusing by the, by the parklands that we have. But it's certainly high-quality, high-density, and it fits with the vision of the development of King County and the Puget Sound that, that we see. We've talked about the fact that there may be benefits for EMS levy, community development block grants, EFOR. I, I won't belabor those points. We've talked about the potential bonding authority that would allow us to work on certain capital projects, to partner with people like King County and, and Samamish and others for regional solutions. I'll also mention that the Chamber of Commerce has come forward as supportive of this measure, which we've appreciated their feedback on it. And then, a couple of points that Councilmember Share brought up that I would like to address. There, there can't be a profit from the annexation tax credit. You can't, you can't make money off of it. You can address costs. And so, when we talked before, just understand, there's never going to be a profit if you, if you fold in that annexation tax credit. It's merely this ability to address the capital one-time startup costs associated with the annexation. Another question, another thing he brought up that's near and dear to my heart is level of service on police and parks. One of the things that we did in Land and Shore is we spent a lot of time grilling Mr. Nesbit on how he came up with the police estimates. And he really dove into it a lot more than we had in the previous study. And really, what he did was he looked at common census blocks. He looked at census blocks that looked like Kohani in the city of Issaquah. We have a huge daytime population. We have a, we have a huge amount of retail in the city. This generates a lot of calls into the police department. So they said, okay, if you take the things that look like Kohani in the city and you extrapolate them out, what does that look like? And this is how they arrived at what they did. But I'll also point out, if Councilmember Share talked about population per, population per officer, and there's a recommendation here for five more officers, you actually get back to the city as a whole, if you go to seven officers. But again, we don't think we have to do that, because Nesbit basically showed that our expectations of the call volume in, up there in the Highlands, you just, you can't one-to-one extrapolate it from the entirety of the city. This is also true with parks, because a lot of people don't realize Kohani, Kohani has a wonderful private park system. And it was one of the things I loved about living in Kohani. And I've gone on record as saying that I wish Squawk Mountain had a park system like the Highlands or like Kohani. But it really makes it, I understand why Councilmember Share is concerned about level of service. But I also believe that you can't compare directly that level of capital for parks and recreation per head in Kohani the way you can in the city, because they have such an extensive private park system. So for me personally, it's, it's very important to me that police and parks be well-covered for the potential residents that would come in. But I believe that the Nesbit study correctly estimates that effort. So finally, in terms of geographic sense, I agree that it looks funny on a map. Kohani is this knob that sort of sticks out into space. But you know, Providence Point is the same way. And a while back, it was important to the residents of Providence Point that they be part of Issaquah. And I think, we all think it's important that we value having Providence Point in the city. Likewise, South Cove is sort of a knob sticking out over towards Bellevue. Doesn't have a, you know, doesn't have a lot of connection into the rest of the city. There's kind of one road, really. And then Talis is a knob that sort of sticks off to the southwest. So we have a city that is not geographically perhaps perfectly compact, but we're also surrounded by mountains. So while I understand that there may, I'm, I'm sensitive to the issue of the, the carbon footprint, and I think that's a very valid point. I do believe that this potential annexation is not out of character with the rest of the annexations that we've had as a city. So for all those reasons put together, I'm going to be supporting the bill this evening. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has not had an opportunity to speak, that desires to speak, before we start our second round? Seeing none then, Stacy?
Thank you. I would agree with, with you, Tola, that with every annexation, it probably looked funny, because we were, you add a chunk here and you add a chunk there, and it's like building with Legos a little bit. The question that we have before us tonight is whether annexing Kohani, the Kohani area is in the best interest and general welfare of Issaquah. That's actually in the statute that the legislative body is supposed to consider. To me, that's standard, and the standard again is whether it's in the best interests and general welfare of Issaquah. What that means to me is what will be the most advantageous course for Issaquah? And I believe that annexing the Kohani area is the most advantageous course for Issaquah, and I believe that for a couple of reasons. First is, from all the evidence I've seen, it clearly shows that it's a good thing for Issaquah. From the financial standpoint, and we did a lot of studying here, we heard that generally, when you annex residential areas, residential annexations generally at best are a wash. Well, the study that we have shows that this clearly is not a wash. This results in a positive cash flow to the city. The annexation area also would assume its fair share of the city's debt. That results in lower payments on bonds for the existing city residents, such as park bonds. And of course, it would be lower taxes for the, the, lower taxes for the Kohani residents. I also believe that this annexation is very likely the only opportunity for Issaquah to become an entitlement city, when almost all of the other cities adjacent to Issaquah likely would have, be already be entitlement cities, or then have the opportunity to become entitlement cities. And then there are the people. The people in the Kohani area are already part of our city. By annexing Kohani, it's not as though we annex people who are not already here, who are not going to somehow magically appear. The folks are already here. They live here, they work here, they play here, and they volunteer here. And if not for that two-part vote in 2006, they already would be residents of Issaquah. Those people are a tremendous resource for the city of Issaquah. As I mentioned, they already do a tremendous amount for us here. They allow us, the annexation would allow the city to utilize the entire area, including the Kohani area, to meet the needs of people that Issaquah is already serving. And those new residents also then can have a stronger voice in their local government. Secondly, and I think this is equally as important, what happens if we do not seek to annex the Kohani area? Well, I think I will just specifically address Issaquah Falls City Road, even though we talked about it earlier this evening. That road is going to be an issue for Issaquah if we annex and if we don't annex. If we do annex, we get control of the roads in that area and any upgrades in the future. So we have a say in what happens. If we do not annex, we have no control. I would rather have control over those roads than not. And as I mentioned earlier, every annexation comes with responsibility, and usually, capital responsibility. And the Issaquah Falls City Road and the road system up there is no different. Annexation will not change the fact that none of the jurisdictions right now have any money to fix the road right now or in the foreseeable future. But I see that if we pass on annexation, just because the road will need attention eventually, we would be missing a huge opportunity. I do believe that annexation of the Kohani area is in the best interest of Issaquah, because the financial study shows that, and that there are missed opportunities by not annexing. So I'm going to be supporting the, the motion that we have before us tonight. I also wanted to mention, because I'm not sure I mentioned it earlier, that Land and Shore did recommend that it be one question on the ballot, that it not be a two-part question. I can't remember if I addressed that before. So it would be whether you want to vote and assume the bonded indebtedness. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Then it's my turn to say a couple of words. In the 13 years that I've been on the council, I've had the opportunity to go through this process a number of times. And we've annexed a number of different areas, the North Annexation Area, Greenwood Point, South Cove, Providence Point. And I always try to look back and say, are we better off because of those annexations? And history has told me that indeed we are. And I always ask the question, looking back retrospectively, did our level of service suffer? And to that question, I don't believe they have. The Kohani potential annexation area already uses our facilities. They're in our senior center, our community center. They're swimming in our pools. And a very large percentage of the 2,200 kids that participated in youth basketball administered by the city of Issaquah's Parks and Rec are from Kohani, as are many of the soccer players playing soccer in Issaquah and at Tibbetts Valley Park. I believe that allowing the Kohani PAA to vote on, on being a part of Issaquah, if successful, will make Issaquah stronger. I believe it makes sense financially. I believe, as Councilmember Goodman, that it makes sense for our residents. And that 10 years from now, if indeed Kohani becomes a, and the other, other subdivisions become a part of Issaquah, history will show that this council did the right thing by putting it to a vote. Are there any other questions and comments before I call the question? Paul?
Thank you, Fred. And I know, if you, I'm sorry if you wanted the last comments.
I didn't. I just wanted to try to move it forward.
Thank you. Yeah, very good. So, so... So, I was, I think we did a good thing with the consultant that we hired to do this study. I do accept the study in its entirety. It's a quality piece of work. And I have, I've spent some time with it. I think it's a very, it's a good analysis. I don't know what a perfect one looks like, but that looks good. And so, I can accept the study and the analysis that's in there, and therefore, I do accept the assessment that financial, the financial element of that as well. My colleague, Councilmember Share, identified a number of other potential costs that maybe weren't accounted for properly. And I don't know if he's right or not, but I'm basing my decision based upon the information that was provided in the study. And, you know, I'm good with that. Earlier today, well, this evening, I brought up a question about the Issaquah Falls City Road. And just fill in a few more details that maybe have already been mentioned. So, we know it's already on something equivalent to the TIP for the county. And I heard tonight that the process is that we would have to negotiate, really, what would happen with those roads. So, and I also heard, and I think it's been said by Councilmember Butler and others, is that by supporting annexation, by this council supporting annexation and putting the vote in front of the citizens of the PAA, that there is no commitment from us that the city will take on some other form of those projects and do something. That's not to say that we won't, but it's not a commitment of capital in those projects. I think that needs to be understood. But back to, I think, really where, how I'm basing my decision tonight, I think, as Councilmember Goodman reminded us, and I appreciated the presentation, we saw the title of our city administrator's slides had the key phrase from the RCW, and the purpose is for us to consider the benefit to the interest and general welfare of the city of Issaquah. So, that sounds to me a little bit like an accounting exercise, so to speak, and not just in terms of dollars as well. I do view the fact that the quality of their roads in the PAA are below the general level of standard we have in the city as a negative. So, there will be, it will be a negative for existing citizens with a greater proportion of resources to be directed toward, say, an overlay and other type programs in Kohani area. And also, we don't know what is in store long-term for the Kohani Falls City Road. That's another thing. It will compete with something that I hold dear, and that is the priority of the many capital projects that we identified to realize the central Issaquah plan. So, I think in those two areas, you know, and the potential capital costs of the road and the overall quality of the roads, it's not on the positive side of the ledger for existing city residents. However, there are more on the positive side. I believe that the revenue analysis is a positive for the general welfare of the city of Issaquah. I believe that for property owners and their tax payments based upon bonds, that is actually an improvement, because those will be, would be reduced for existing city residents. I think that the police and the parks issues are more or less, I don't really view those as negative or positive. I think that, I'm not concerned about a loss of level of service. I think our police department and the people of the city can assure that both public safety and parks administration will not degrade for existing residents. But probably the number one element, and Councilmember Goodman mentioned it a little bit earlier, I started asking people about what would be the social affinity, and I appreciated our administrator actually using that as one of the bullets in his slide, about what is the existing social affinity between the PAA and Issaquah? And I believe that's really pretty strong. And really, I think there's also another way to look at it. I think the number one benefit that the city of Issaquah will gain, should the Kohani PAA become part of our city, is that there is a tremendous amount of human capital wealth within the Kohani PAA. And our city, our area, would greatly benefit from that human capital becoming part of the city of Issaquah. And so, through that analysis, and for, I guess, the selfish reasons that I want the best for our city, I think that this direction is indeed something that would be best for our city. So, I'm going to be supporting this resolution for the vote tonight.
Other comments or discussion? Seeing none then, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2013-07 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
That is six affirmative and one negative. Councilmember Share dissenting. There is another part to this, and I will look towards Councilmember Goodman to move the next item.
I would move to direct the administration to prepare pre-annexation zoning for the annexation area prior to the election.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none then, the motion is to direct the administration to propose pre-annexation zoning for the annexation area prior to the election. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries six, one, with Councilmember Share dissenting. Our next item of business is Agenda Bill 6630, an interlocal agreement with the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District, reference Overdale Connection Charges. This is coming back from the Infrastructure Committee. Councilmember Fortner.
Thank you.
Introducing that one, please.
Thank you. The Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District is in the process of providing utility improvements to the Overdale neighborhood that is located inside the city limits and the area that is currently being studied by the city for utility assumption. To fund the improvements, the Plateau Water and Sewer District has formed a Utility Local Improvement District. As part of the ULID, the Plateau has negotiated with the property owners the capability to pay the district back over time for the regional connection charges and general facility charges. As a result of the potential for the city assumption, the Plateau's Water and Sewer District has requested an interlocal agreement with the city that provides for certainty that the district will be allowed to levy and collect revenues from the Overdale residents to cover the loan amount associated with the connection charges and ULID assessments. The Council Infrastructure Committee held a special meeting on July 8th and discussed the reasoning and need for approving the draft interlocal agreement. The committee understood the merits and no disadvantages of authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement, and therefore, recommended approval under regular business. I would move to approve and authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the interlocal agreement with Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District regarding the Overdale Connection Charges.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Councilmember Share?
Thank you, Pro Tem Mayor Fred Butler. So, there's been a lot of bad, I wouldn't say vibes, negative stories about our jurisdiction and the Water and Sewer District. And, you know, there's been a lot of stuff that's been going on recently, that a lot of it's been in the form of emails we've received, a lot of articles written in the papers about issues that our respective jurisdictions are having over certain matters. And I hope that this agenda bill and this agreement, which I'll just say right away, I fully support, I hope that this will show the public that Issaquah and the district can work together on things, and that Issaquah and the district can agree to things that are mutually beneficial for our jurisdictions. And I hope when people look at the other issues that have been bantered about in the papers and in emails and comments that we've heard, that people will remember this agreement and the fact that we were able to do something together between the city and the district that results in a positive net gain for the residents of Overdale Park. So, I thought that it was important to have this on regular business, really to call special attention to that fact. And I think that this is a good deal for Overdale Park. It's a good deal for the district, and it's a good deal for the city of Issaquah. So, I look forward to having it move ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none then, all those in favor of moving to approve and authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the interlocal agreement with Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District, reference Overdale Connection Charges signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. That is the last of our regular business. We will now move into executive session. This executive session meeting will be to discuss collective bargaining under the provisions of RCW 42.30.140, Pren 4, Close Pren, Pren B, Close Pren. This executive session will take approximately 20 minutes, and action is anticipated and open session. So, we are adjourned into executive session at this time. time.
He knows.
She's going up there, I think.
Nope.
We're on.
There we go.
We are back from executive session and regular session at 9:20. Is there any other business to come before the council? Joe?
I would move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the labor contract with IPOA for the years 2012 through 2015.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none then, all those in favor of moving to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the labor contract with IPOA for the years 2012 through 2015 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Our last item of business is for good of the order. Is there any good of the order? Seeing none then, we are adjourned. Order, order. We'll have... Stacy, you did a-